You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is November eighth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November eighth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. I would ask that you please silence all electronic devices and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and assign a prayer.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation under God in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to issue a congratulations to all of those who won last night in our municipal elections. And I would also like to issue a thank you for your service to all of those who will not be continuing with us going forward. First off on roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Me.
President.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Dodge.
Present.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski. Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Cora.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nile. Approval of the minutes. Mr. President, make a motion to approve. These are also for our October third as well as our October seventeenth minutes. We have motion to approve by Councilman Press Valinsky and seconded by Councilman Cora on the vote, please.
Ms. Dodge. Aye. Am I loud enough?
There you are. I think you have to face the screen.
To the microphone.
Yeah, it's going in and out.
Right, so if you face the screen where you're speaking, we can hear you.
Can you start over?
Yes, Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Beck.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nile. Reports of standing committees. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Finance Committee met on November eighth, twenty twenty three at five thirty seven P M. There was a quorum for the meeting and starting off with the Michigan City Riverboat and Boy Claims Docket for November eighth, twenty twenty three. Riverboat not funds number two, two, three, five, two hundred forty nine thousand, eight hundred twenty one dollars. Riverboat E F T fund number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boy Development E F T fund number two, five, zero, four, zero dollars. Total claims, two hundred forty nine thousand, eight hundred twenty one dollars. Those claims are for Spencer Manufacturing, which was for an automobile expense for the fire twenty twenty three brush truck, and that is a balance due. Also, City of Michigan City Riverboat Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, November seventh, twenty twenty three. Grand total ending balance, four million, eight hundred, two thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars, eighteen cents. And if anyone had any questions in regard to the brush truck, this is provided by Controller Hoffmaster for similarity as to what they are currently gonna be receiving. So I have copies if anyone wants them.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Claims docket, November eighth, twenty twenty three. Fund twenty-two, thirty-five Riverboat claims in the amount of two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty one dollars. E F T zero, fund twenty-five, zero, four, boy development, zero dollars for a total claims of two hundred and forty nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty one. Is there a motion?
So move.
I didn't catch that. It was the first. We have so a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Corum. Ms. Nile, want to vote, please?
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Judge.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nile. Our reports from boards and commissions.
Tommy Clover, thirteen, sixteen, Ohio Street, and I'm also a member of the Michigan City Fire American Commission. I want to pass it on. We did certify our hiring list for our meeting Monday. We have a nineteen on our hiring list. We have a full complement of eighty-one firefighters, but you know, we got four retirements coming up. We have nine probationary firefighters. Now we gotta be able to pass their E M T examination, so we're all set to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clover. Any other boards and commission reports? Reports of special and select committees. Reports from mayor or other city officers and departments. It's too easy. Communications.
Is there no petitions tonight? Uh, communications, in accordance with ordinance number. Am I okay?
Yes.
Okay. In accordance with ordinance number four, five, three, eight, an accident report that took place with the Michigan City Fire Department vehicle on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty three was received in the clerk's office on October twenty fourth. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on October twenty sixth from Scott Malin regarding the city advertisement policy for job openings they are trying to fill.
Thank you, Ms. Nile. Can you please read our first resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, authorizing the waiver of permit fees for the renovation of the old Brown Mackey building owned by Michigan City area schools to expand their vocational programming. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preszulinski, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Paul Preszulinski, Mr. Matt, Mr. Tillman, Ms. Tillman, sorry, and Mr. Dabney.
Are there any comments from the sponsors?
Uh, Mr. President, I have a couple of comments. I know that the school system contacted myself about this resolution and about waiving the fees for the building permit and also for the mechanical permit and what the school system wants to do. And there's two representatives here from the school system, if anybody has questions. But what they, what they want to do is the Brown Mackey Building on the corner of twenty and Willlin Ave, where the new preschool building has been redesigned and is up and running now. They want to take the other half of that building and make that a vocational schooling program. And that's gonna be a twelve point four million dollar project. And what they're asking the city to do is to waive the construction fees of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and the mechanical permit for three thousand dollars for a total of one thou- or one hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars for this project. And I am in full support of that. We also did that with the preschool renovation, early daycare, whatever the title of the project was out there. So I think in line with what we did there, this is consistent with our practices. And I would appreciate it the other council members would vote in that fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Deitch.
And I did, I reached back out to the school too to ask them about if, if we were at a fifty percent amount versus a full amount, just for the sake of, I know we talked about our permit fees hadn't gone up. And I just wanted to make sure that if the, someone from the controller's office is here, that what does that do for next year as far as the budget? Because I know we're a partner in this. We want to be a partner, but I did reach back out to the school and talk to them about a different percentage, just in case we're gonna run into an issue. But and to see if there would be an issue downstate if it was fifty percent versus a hundred percent. And I did, I just want to make that known that I did reach out because of, I know we had a revenue. We talked about our revenues not being up. So I did make that, I supported fully, but I just wanted to make sure I did my due diligence and reached out to the administration and let them know, just in case there was any pushback. So I gave them a heads up.
Any comments from the public?
Oh, oh. Yeah, I had spoken to Dave and I was wanting to bring up and just mention some of the things, he's got a slide there for to show. He's a head of maintenance for all the schools.
Please state your name and affiliation.
For the record, please. I'm Dave Williamson. I live at six oh five White Oak Drive, and I am the operations manager, facilities engineer for the school.
Evening, everyone. Kevin McGuire, Michigan City Schools as well. I guess if I could, obviously, any amount of money is welcomed, but it's a brief overview, and it's kind of been stated a little bit by Mr. Press Valinsky, but the basic idea and the, the construction is to convert Brown Mackey into a C T E building. Roughly, it's actually probably closer to three quarters of the building will be transitioned through the process. So a lot of construction going on in that area. And obviously, you're already seeing some fruits of that with the new playground and everything in front of the building with pre K, which is opened and operating. There's part of the construction does include some more updates to that playground facility, so you'll see that happening with some nice fencing and everything to protect the kids on the playground. But certainly, anything that we can save, that's already a tight budget with the project itself, anything that we can get assistance on will help go towards even purchasing newer or updated equipment within the building as well as any moving that will happen within the district as programs move from the current A K Smith Vocational Center to the new C T E Center. So certainly, from a school district perspective, we would be certainly happy with anything that's available to us. Hopefully, we can move forward with the whole, whole percentage.
I got a question. Is this view that we're looking at from the perspective of facing highway twenty?
I don't know exactly what you're looking at, so playgrounds on, there you go.
Okay.
I've got a question also. Coming from Elston High School in eighty-one, I remember A K Smith Center was the primo auto body shop in the region. This auto shop, is it gonna include like electric type of stuff, or you, you have a vision or you know what's gonna, what's happening with that?
Yeah, currently, there's conversations to build in electrical in the automotive center. Right now, I would say that it's not in consideration because of space availability. We are looking at other vocational opportunities, so including the automotive side of what that can look like. And in the essence, in advanced manufacturing class that may take on some of the electrical side of the automobile.
It's gonna be exciting to see that.
Programs that we already have.
I'm just excited to see that. This is, this is what we need to be the leaders in the.
Yeah, this would be the top of the line again, primo automotive center once again.
And this is carrying it towards what the business community is asking for from us, so we're building correctly into that?
Yeah, every program that moves over there, we have insight from the business community to make sure that we're upgrading all the equipment in each of those classrooms.
Mr. President, yeah, it's good to see both of you, Mr. Williamson and Mr. McGuire. So are you going to be moving everything from A K Smith Center then?
Yeah, not everything at this time. There's just not enough space in the new center, and we're also, you know, looking at different avenues. Three programs that will stay at the new, at the current vocational center are the Cosmetology, Cosmetology Classroom, the Fire Science Classroom, and well, not well, adult ed, what's the other program? I'm missing one. Oh, Colonnary. Sorry, Colonnary, still saying it, at the Elston Complex.
And will this be used by students countywide?
Yes, we're still in partnership with all of the school districts within the company.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So what's the timeline to, for the building, for the construction?
Great question. So most of the majority of the construction will be done next fall and open too soon next fall. The new construction for the automotive lab, because that is a new building, that will happen later that fall, likely around Christmas time is the plan for us to move into, right? Christmas of twenty twenty-four.
To move into it.
To move into automotive specifically. The rest of it, we're moving in next fall. Obviously, that's a construction timeline is a pretty intense, and there are some supply issues that we're already dealing with, but we're still, we're still scheduled to be occupied this fall.
So as far as funding, is this all capital fund, capital improvement?
No, we actually went out and received a bond this spring for the twelve point four million.
Okay.
And construction costs did come in significantly higher than what we had originally anticipated as everybody's dealing with. Construction costs are running twenty-five percent more. So when this was discussed and planned, we were looking at eleven point two million dollar project, and that went up significantly just based on construction costs.
Yeah, Councilman Simmons.
I like to be added as sponsor.
Did you get them, Ms. Nile?
It's so good.
Okay, thank you.
And so do I. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one, but it wasn't for the two gentlemen. It's actually going back to the question that was posed to the controller's office about regarding the revenues and if we did the fifty percent opposed to the hundred percent or the difference, or how is that, just a hundred percent? Yeah, yes. She's right. She never answered.
We base the estimates for all of our permitting fees just based on historical numbers. We take an average of the last three to five years. So I, I would probably not be truthful if I would say I would miss this hundred thousand dollars going into our general fund because I'm constantly looking for ways to bring money into our general fund, but it's not going to have any impact on the budget for next year if we do not receive this hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the public?
Yes, Tommy Clover, thirteen, sixteen, Ohio Street. I fully support this. This is one of the fulfilling things about being the council members is to help out our schools and these type of matters. I got that preschool going on. I'm gonna send my little priority there next year. We're Michigan City area school family. We're gonna dominate all the way from pre K all the way to graduation day. Just wanna, anybody who's gonna work on our car, maybe they can get, they can work on my car. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Clover. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
motion to approve by Councilman Don Preszulinski and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nile, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nile. Congratulations. Okay, Ms. Nile, can you, please read our next resolution by title only.
Resolution by title only. A resolution of the Michigan City Common Council designating the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Zone for a period of five years from the current sunset date of December thirty first, twenty twenty-three, and this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preszulinski and Mr. Matt.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Absent Paul, I would like to say that the president, Tommy, my family member, is ill and he can't be here, but a representative is here to explain some of that. So, so come on, introduce yourself and name and address.
I'm Gabrielle Chapel, eighty-three oh three North Four Hundred West. I'm the interim executive director for Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association. I'm here tonight to request your support in extending our urban enterprise zone an additional five years so we can continue to make an impact on the community. During the twenty twenty-two grant cycle, I put some flyers out that show some of the work we were able to do in our community. The Urban Enterprise Association granted twenty thousand dollars in residential grants and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in business grants. The total investment project amounts we were involved with was two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in business projects and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and forty for residential improvements. So far this year, we have been involved with nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars of residential projects, two hundred and one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five of business projects. We've approved fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars of residential grants, thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two business grants with more projects still on the table for our November meeting. Over the past year, we have restructured with new management. We are now a two-signature check signing entity with correct invoicing completed by the urban enterprise gurus of the area, Shore Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated. The Urban Enterprise Association has helped to bring jobs to the zone as well, granting money for businesses like Reprographic Arts to expand their building and add additional employment opportunities. In addition to our grant opportunities, we have helped many businesses located within the zone to receive tax credits through their investment into the zone. Our twenty twenty-three tax credit program allowed for fifteen point five million dollars of tax credits and deductions in Michigan City. Over the course of the last year, we have worked diligently to develop many relationships. These include relationships with multiple other urban enterprise associations, including Hammond, Lafayette, El Carte, and La Porte. We have worked with both regional and federal partners to begin work on grant match opportunities for local businesses, furthering the advantages of operating a business located within the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Zone. We also have joined the Chamber of Commerce to create closer ties within the community. In conclusion, I'm coming to you on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association to request an extension for another five years of the enterprise zone to continue to operate and be able to offer tax credits to the businesses within the zone as well as our grant programs that directly affect citizens and business owners of our city. We also have a couple of board members that would like to speak.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. President. Yeah, you can bring him up.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Darren Huber. I'm at four oh one First Street. I am the vice chairman of the Urban Enterprise Association of Michigan City. I'd like to start by thanking Councilman Paul Preszulinski and Councilman Michael Mack for introducing the resolution to redesignate the urban enterprise zone. And I'm here to urge the rest of the council to do the same and vote in support of this remarkable program. The positive impacts that the urban enterprise zone has had in our city's economic growth, job creation, and community development cannot be overstated. It's a critical tool for fostering business growth, both large and small, attracting investment and ensuring our city remains competitive and vibrant. In light of these highlights, it's imperative that we continue to support and invest in the urban enterprise zone. The Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association, made up of almost entirely new volunteer-based board, has demonstrated a remarkable track record in a very short period of time. And renewing this contract for another term is not only an investment in our city's future, but also a commitment to its continued prosperity. Let us build upon our achievements and look forward to a future filled with economic vitality, employment opportunities, and thriving communities. Thank you again for your time and consideration and your vote to support business, the residents, and continued prosperity in Michigan City.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeremy Rossi, nine oh one Indiana Avenue, La Porte. I am also the owner and operator, part owner and operator of Uptown Social at nine oh seven Franklin Street. I'm here on behalf of the business that I operate. As we were, we were a grant recipient for twenty twenty-three. This grant actually helped us renovate our ballroom floor, which was ancient. And so now we have a brand new ballroom floor that should last us a very, very long time. And if it wasn't for the grant we received from Urban Enterprise, we probably couldn't have made this project happen as soon as we did. So we're very grateful for that. Because of what we received and the amount of support we had from Urban Enterprise, I actually became, ended up being on the Board of Directors for Urban Enterprise. And because I wanted to kind of share that information with other business owners and let them know that there is money out there to help you support the changes that they're trying to make and develop in Michigan City. And so because of that, I have, I wanted to be here today to, for my own personal testimony, to let you know that this money has helped us tremendously, but also that I too want to continue this for the next five years and make sure that other businesses and also residents can find some financial support to accomplish their goals and, and move forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Yeah, come to either the mic right there behind you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Brown, Reprographic Arts, twenty-eight, twenty-four, East Michigan Boulevard. They asked me to come tonight, and I thought, well, why not? You know, I filled out the grant. It helped me. The last time I was in this room, and the only time, when they were talking about the train coming to town, the trains coming and all that, and they had two sides going back and forth. And I thought about it and said, hey, I'm for it. You know, you're gonna take my building. And some people think you're gonna get rich. That's not the case, but they didn't beat me out of my building. They moved me and I was whole, and they threw a few extra things in there that I wouldn't have been able to do. And so then, you know, time drags on, but the building we did move into was the old Chris Mar Graphics, and their ship sailed a long time ago, and it was like dilapidated, and we put all kinds of our own money in it. Then time dragged on and COVID came, and it was kind of like the perfect storm around that time, because I had to either, you know, get with it or get out of it. And they told me about the grant, and I don't know if that really gets out there enough or if people just don't want to fill it out. But you're not gonna do anything. You're not gonna get anything. You can't be whining afterwards that somebody else got it. So, you know, we filled it all out. It, you know, it wasn't that bad. I bought a bunch of stuff from Home Depot, got some bids from some contractors, and went ahead and added on and was able to put some more employees in there. And we're a small business. We're not some big old factory bringing in thirty million dollars, because sometimes people think that the city only caters to them. But that's not true. A closed mouth don't get fed. When we opened up our mouth, and this is my vernacular, sorry, you know, the way I put it. And we did everything the way you're supposed to. They came and inspected it, got the permit, and they gave us the check. And truth be told, I think it should maybe be more than seven, five hundred dollars, because I put a big old grip of money in there. That's just me, but I'm grateful for what they gave me. My wife wasn't. She said, any more additions to that building, you're in trouble. So I hope I didn't embarrass your committee, but thank you for doing it. And I had got a grant before. I think it's appropriate for me to thank Clarence, but I think he was in charge of all back then, or some of his workers. And that went pretty well, so I hope that helped.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now I've used your services plenty of times.
Scott Malin, two hundred Kenwood. This sounds like a good program, but what are the funding, where's the funding come from? Does this cost the city anything? Sounds like a good program, but what are the financial considerations? Thank you. Thank you. We had a question after. Do you have a comment?
Let's let Gabby answer the question.
So we are funded through the tax credit program, and the businesses receive a tax credit based on their investment within the zone. There's a whole spreadsheet that goes along to calculate that, and then they pay us thirty-five percent of that tax savings, which allows us to then invest back into the zone through the residential grants and the business grants. So if anybody wants to see a breakdown of that, I'm more than happy to share that as well.
And also that they have to be within the zone.
They absolutely have to be within the designated urban enterprise zone.
So can we have that, that information? Because I know there was the spreadsheet, and then also the results of what was found for S E H. Have you guys all resolved that?
It's been resolved through our attorney, through the A I E Z, which is the state U E Z program, as well as Indiana Department of Revenue. We've contacted and consulted with all three and resolved the issues.
Okay, but you have the information with you tonight?
I don't, but I can get it to you.
Mr. President, I have a question, ladies here. As far as advertising for businesses to get this funding for individuals that live within the enterprise zone. How do you do that? I mean, do you have a robust advertising campaign so people know that this money's there?
Currently, we have a Facebook page that I've been trying to promote more. I've also been working with our consultant from S D H to find out what other urban enterprise zones have done. And he told me that they drafted a letter and they sent it to every single enterprise zone business. So he's going to be getting that to me shortly as well.
Okay, thank you, because sometimes I think that we don't do a good enough job. Of getting the word out to the areas where people can benefit from these type of programs.
I agree, and that's why we're trying to come to a solution.
Fanta, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, not for her. I just have a comment. Or question for everybody.
For her.
He had a comment.
We're still in public comments, so.
Good evening, Lawrence Zimmer, one-ten Elmwood Drive in Michigan City. I'm the president of the Plan Commission and the Board of Zonia Appeals. I'm also on the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as a member of the Urban Enterprise Association. I just wanted to voice my strong support for this program. Being on the Historic Preservation Commission, which those, we have three historic districts. They are all within the urban enterprise zone. I know there's a lot of properties, residential and commercial, that need improvements and upgrades. And everyone in the zone and in the historic districts could benefit from this. I also want to say that all of those properties within the zone would also benefit from. The grants to make energy upgrades and improvements to their properties. We all know how important it is to be reducing our carbon footprint and reducing our energy consumption. And anything we can do to support homeowners and business owners to. To do that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, I used to be liaison on this for years back. And one thing I used to ask about regarding the business grant that you guys do. And I wonder if this has, has this ever been given consideration? Because the way it works now is that the business has to do fifteen thousand dollars worth of work. Is that how it still works? And then they are reimbursed at seventy-five hundred? Because that's the way it used to be when I was there, and I used to always want to say, well, new businesses would need that money upfront. So I'll let you go ahead and answer that if you're gonna.
Sure, so the the investment does not have to be a minimum of fifteen thousand dollars. We can reimburse for businesses up to fifty percent, up to seventy-five hundred dollars. So a maximum amount to maximize your your grant. But if you have a five thousand dollar improvement, we can grant fifty percent of that. Correct, so. We can grant twenty-five hundred, so there's no minimum, basically.
Okay, yeah, I was working with the maximum amount of the grant is seventy-five hundred. And so you get that, you had to do fifteen thousand. That's what I was saying. Okay, thank you. And so what I used to say when I was on there is a new business. Would not have the resource to be able to spend fifteen thousand. I used to always want to see the money come either on quotes that they have. Or, you know, the money come upfront, because if I have a new business, if we have a new business, we need the money to get started. And I used to always wonder, could that be changed around or at least thought about, discussed? In order to do that, because like I said, a new business needs that money for seed money to get started. I wouldn't be able to spend, I'm just gonna use that top dollar amount of fifteen thousand in order to get reimbursed seventy-five hundred. And that's why I was, when I was on that, I wanted to see that happen, because I thought that would help smaller businesses get started. One of the arguments that came back, they said, well, you know, we're looking out for the taxpayer dollar, but it's business. Sometimes businesses fail. That's just, you know, the way businesses work. So these are super established businesses that obviously are not going to fail. But I would like to see it work out better for a new business to have that money upfront. Maybe on quotes of work that's going to happen in order to get them off and running, so. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Council on the table?
I do, and actually, if Gabrielle could come back, please.
I was gonna mention, you probably didn't want to go too far, but move fast.
The first one is in regards to. I sat on U E Z for two years as liaison as well, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And there was a couple of things I know that was discussed, and I just want to know if those was implemented. One, you already mentioned about S E H and all that was resolved. Has invoices for twenty twenty-three been issued already as well? Okay, then the other one, from what Councilman Dabney was saying in regards to. Established businesses, but the new businesses. Sadly, we were anticipating a grocery store on the east side of town that was able to utilize U E Z funding. Was anything implemented or put in place as somewhat of a safety net for business, for whatever reason? If it didn't come to fruition and those funds got paid out to where. Those funds will get paid back.
Right, so we have not had another instance like that, an opportunity where we've invested in a startup fee. So that would be something we would discuss with our attorney to draft something if that ever was an opportunity again. But that absolutely is something we could discuss with our board and possibly implement.
And then one other thing, I know we speak a lot on businesses or small businesses or new establishing businesses, but. What is the focus in regards to the resident residents that need home repairs? Is this readily available to where if they contact the office? That everything is guided through in regards to your application process? I know you're all gonna streamline that a little bit more accessible. And the information or financial information that you wanted to obtain. Approximately, how many do you request for grants do you get from residents that need home repairs?
So far this year, every grant that we have gotten has been approved. So as long as the basic application is followed, they fall with it. Well, I take that back, I'm sorry. There was one that did not get approved due to being above the income limit. So we review if they are within the zone is the first thing we look at. Then we look at if they meet the income guidelines, and then if they have the two bids, and as long as they have everything and. It's a good project, you know, any kind of home repair, we've been approving everyone.
And your, for construction repairs, is your cutoff August?
So we actually moved it to October thirty-first of this year to give everybody a little bit extra time, because we had a couple of people that contacted us late, and we wanted to make sure we didn't miss anybody. So we have a couple on the agenda still for November, that they have to finish the project before December. And then our grant cycle will open back up in March and run through October again.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Councilman Mack? Just wanted, no question, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming. Tell Tommy, he's probably watching, get well soon. I recruited him years ago, and I'm just so impressed with the team he's put together, listening to you guys speak. In economic terms, I think it's called the virtuous cycle, what you call it, or something to that effect, where. You come to Michigan City, Michigan City is a certain type of community from a federal position, so they give tax dollars out. Michigan City's residents should have representations taking that. So that thirty-five percent you're saying is coming out of the tax break that you got for coming to Michigan City. And that, we should replicate that all over, but you know, so thank you. Take care. Councilman Cora?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like, I'd be supportive of this, and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. And just looking at how you're all functioning, I really am impressed and I appreciate all the volunteers who serve on the board and give up your time. To promote the community, promote the businesses, and promote entrepreneurship, frankly, and that's the most important thing. And if you want to grow as a community, I think we need to promote entrepreneurship. So thank you for all the work you do.
Councilman Deich?
Yes, and again, I support the mission of the urban enterprise. What I would like to though, I would like to see though, all of that, because there was a lot of things going on. So in saying that, I would like the table till the next meeting. And if you could provide that to all the council members, all of the information about kind of what transpired and who's paying into what. And if we're caught up on all that and that everything's clear. I would like to see all that. Also, do you all have an annual budget that you put together? If you could share that with the council for the next meeting, that would be great. So I move the table until we receive that information, and we can do it at the next council meeting.
We had a motion to table and. Name was already second by Councilman Dabney, so. Ms. Nightup on the vote, please.
Mr. Cora? Ms. Tolman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nightup. Can you please read our first ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance to establish responsible bidding practices. And submission requirements on public works projects and creating section two dash three, four, five in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Prespolinski, and Mr. Paul Prespol.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to, for the sake of the council and the public on what we're voting on here. I would like to read the whereas and what this ordinance actually means. Okay, all right, number one. Number one, whereas the city of Michigan City, Indiana is required by law. To award capital improvement contracts to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And whereas the city, based upon its experience, has determined that quality workmanship. Efficient operation, safety, and timely completion of projects requires all bidders. Meet certain minimum requirements in order to be a responsive and responsible bidder. And whereas applicable state law also requires that bidders meet certain. Minimum requirements in order to be a responsive and responsible bidder. And whereas the city seeks to enhance its ability to identify. Responsible and responsible bidders on all city public works, construction projects. By institution of more comprehensive submission requirements, which are in compliance with Indiana state law. And whereas this responsible bidding practice and submission requirements ordinance. Will preserve administrative resources by ensuring that only qualified contractors. And subcontractors are awarded contracts on public works, construction projects. And whereas the responsible bidding practices and submission requirements ordinance. Will assure efficient use of taxpayer dollars. And will promote public safety and is in the public interest. And finally, whereas the responsible bidding practices. And submission requirements ordinance will help ensure that no contractor awarded work under this ordinance. Or any subcontractor at any tier. Working on a project awarded pursuant to this ordinance engages in payroll fraud. Including the misclassification of employees as independent contractors. And to avoid paying state, federal, or local payroll taxes. And workers' compensation insurance, unemployment insurance premiums, and failing to pay overtime. And wages as required by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council on the base.
Yes, we will be setting up a workshop to discuss this further. We did have a public meeting with the La Porte County Building Trades that some of the council people attended over at. What is it, NICA I B E W, and talked through some of these things. So I know this isn't, this was the first draft of it to get it on the agenda. But I know there's some holes as far as who would be managing the process. And then also to add some of the language from the hiring ordinance. Might be prudent for us since we have a hiring ordinance to kind of include some of that language in here to make sure that. Both of them are kind of meshing together. So I just want to let the public know that we will set a date for a workshop to to kind of review it. But also to see what we need to do to strengthen it and to also make sure that, you know, our smaller contractors do have a shot as well. But also to make sure that we don't create another ordinance for the sake of doing it, and then we don't have anybody watching it. So right now, we know that happens a lot. And we just want to make sure that we don't do that moving forward. So I will set the date sometime within the next two days to get this workshop done before the next meeting. Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Good evening. Thanks for letting me come up and give a brief comment to members of council. I really appreciate it. My name is Marcella Constac, and I am a construction analyst for the Indiana, Illinois, and Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. Our company was established to promote, support, and encourage fair contracting throughout our great state. So I was just here to make some positive, give some positive feedback and positive comments about this ordinance. And thank council for their consideration and adoption of the ordinance to establish responsible bidding practices. Adopting such an ordinance will ensure you identify the most responsible contractors that are bidding on your projects. This will promote local skilled workers. This will also promote workforce development in your community and hopefully. Increase the opportunity for young men and women in Michigan City to train and work as skilled trade persons. Which ultimately will bring value to the local economy and have a positive economic impact as well. I would like to ask council also to please consider perhaps dropping the threshold to a hundred and fifty thousand. This will align with the current state bidding statute. And I would also encourage adding the language under bid submission that would allow the threshold to change automatically. As the state bidding statute would change. Appreciate your time. Thank you all very much, and I'll hang around in case you have any questions.
I do. So the state bidding is just a threshold that they've set, maybe, or it's not a must, it's not, it's just a. And the reason why I'm asking, we're a smaller city. I know we have construction projects, but I want to make sure that it's not, we have to do it.
Right, obviously, you can set whatever threshold you guys feel is good for your city. The one fifty is just when the state statute kicks in and says you will advertise. You will have public meetings and so forth and so on. And when you will actually set out for bid, you know, put the project out for bids. So, you know, that's just a recommendation that most communities in Indiana have actually adopted is the one fifty. But again, it's your document. You guys can do as you please. We just thank you for for considering. it's your document. You guys can do as you please. We just thank you for for considering this and adoption.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I don't know if you know the answer or not, but how many other cities in the state would have this this threshold of one hundred and fifty? Do you have any idea?
I don't know the exact number, but I will tell you that there are currently sixty responsible bidder ordinances and policies within Indiana. But that's schools and municipalities as well. And I'd say seventy percent, eighty percent are at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold.
Mr. President, if I could, just so that we're not confused by kind of some of the terminology, the one fifty is a state requirement that triggers.
It's a minimum.
It's a minimum for public bidding in general. This isn't just about public bidding, but rather additional criteria involved in what will be determined to be responsive and responsible. So it's another layer to the minimum requirement of one fifty. What you're, the current version of this legislation says is that you're going to set that threshold for this increased criteria at three hundred as opposed to one fifty that just triggers bidding generally, right? So.
So they still have to bid regardless?
You have to bid at one fifty no matter what. This gets triggered if the project is at three hundred or greater in its current form. She's asking, set it at one fifty so that triggers all requirements.
Well, we could also lower it to fifty thousand, but it would trigger it if we wanted to do it that strenuous.
You could do that, but you wouldn't necessarily want to burden.
No, I was just.
In theory, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Davney?
What Councilman Deitch was saying, did you table or did you just?
Okay, no, we're just gonna have a workshop. Yeah, it's just gonna move to second reading.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, this is our. Yeah. Right, right, right. Okay, I'm getting ahead of Ross. Okay, this will be moved, held over to second reading.
Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor for this.
Ms. Nyla, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can you please read our next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for the eighth edition of the initial plan for use of the portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds to the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies to assist with the funding of the old bandstand preservation project. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Davney, Mr. Don Presblewinski, Dr. Mr. Cora and Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla, and this will be our formal public hearing. Any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, Mr. President. And we had a presentation by Shannon Easton from the Park Department. And after the public hearing, I'll be asking for third reading on this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Kalabik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Once again, I fully support that. That that ban shell, that's a, that's a cherished landmark within our community. I know a lot of my families have actually had their wedding ceremonies performed or students go out there and have their prom pictures taken there. But I remember, I think none of us are new here. We all remember it was August twenty-fourth nineteen ninety-six that President Bill Clinton came there and spoke and he got off the train, he came and gave us a nice speech and went over to the convention over in Chicago. They're gonna have the convention in Chicago again next year. I'd like to maybe arrange to have President Biden come again. You know, once that's all fixed up and maybe even have a, also have President Number Forty-four Barack Obama come too. I think that'd be, I know they don't come here because of campaigns. This is a red, red state, but you know, that'd be nice for him to do that. Now, I remember this is done about ten years ago. I mean, I remember when Johnny Simmel, he read the effort, efforts to restore the observation tower at Washington Park. And we got that back. Yeah, a lot of this infrastructure was put in back during the Great Depression era of the nineteen thirties under President Roosevelt's Work Progress Administration. That's, I hope we move this on and this, you know, these are, you know, we let these run down. We're running down a part of our heritage and our history as a people in a city. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalabik. I'll work on getting those presentations. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Yep, former public chair is closed. Comments from the council? Councilman Deitch?
I move that we move this to third reading.
Second. We have a motion to move to third reading by Councilman Deitch and second by Councilman Presblewinski. Ms. Nyla, vote please.
Ms. Chelman? Aye.
Mr. Davney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presblewinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Mr. Cora?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please read this ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for the eighth edition of the initial plan for use of portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies to assist with the funding of the old bandstand preservation project. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Davney, Mr. Don Presblewinski, Mr. Cora and Mr. Matt.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public?
Scott Mellon, two hundred, Kenwood Place. Considering these are going to be rescue fund money, I'm wondering if we could have some signage that identifies it as being rescue funds money? Something like that. I try to bring good ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Motion to approve?
Second.
Well, motion to approve by Councilman Presblewinski and second by Councilman Deitch. Ms. Nyla, vote please.
Davney?
Davney? Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presblewinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Chelman?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. New business, twenty twenty-four common council appointments expiration dates. Section two six six appointments to the committee and boards. A, before the final meeting of the of the council in a calendar year, the clerk shall produce for the council a schedule of the positions of the various boards and commissions to which the council makes appointments, which will become open in the next calendar year and the dates these positions will become open.
I do have a comment. Uh, if if Clerk Nyla could look up the newly elected officers training in January to make sure if there's a conflict for our city council meeting that we make the adjustment for the council meeting date. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
No unfinished business. Comments from the public?
Scott Mellon, two hundred, Kenwood Place. I've got several things, but first I'd like to congratulate our Madam Mayor-elect on her victory last night. Thank you all. The folks, I don't know if they're still here, the grant people. If these projects aren't supposed to be more than fifty percent of the total project, nine of these on their own literature exceed that. Their grants were more generous than fifty percent of the project. So just as management going forward, and that might be something you were asking about for them to produce, but that's, I like grants for people. I mean, that's great. I'm also a student of the city. But this isn't fifty percent. It's more. So that might be too generous. I read in the paper, we recently took over Meyer Drive and repaved it, which we all know was needed. But did that come before the council? Before we did that? What kind of financial? I'm sorry?
I can answer it. It came through the redevelopment commission. That's a project that we've been working on for a while.
It needed to be done and I guess through to Walmart at some.
Yeah, that that was a TIF project.
Okay, great. Thank you. I did write a letter to the common council that didn't, I might not have been clear in my letter. It was about hiring practices. Just in general, do municipalities have to put jobs advertised open positions? Sort of like the Open Meetings Act, we have to have open meetings. Shouldn't hiring be kind of open to all? I'm, I fully support internal candidates getting maybe first bite at the apple. But advertising opens the pool up to others, a larger pool. My letter referred to the sanitary board and to their credit, they responded to me same day. Their attorney responded and they said, no, we have no legal requirement to put municipal jobs to advertising. So I don't know if that's really good governance. It seems a matter of good governance that good jobs should be made available to the public. Again, internal candidates get a first bite at the apple possibly, but advertising opens you up to the greatest pool of buyers or job candidates. So it seems good governance. That's something, if it's not already a law, something should be looked at. That's hiring practices. We spoke about Councilman Paul Presblewinski brought up a motion about train quiet zones and funding the study. And I guess that's the first step in having to do it. I guess we have to do the study. There was a letter in the paper responding to that on November second, and this person was basically like, you moved by trains, what's your problem? And I think what was missed in that letter is we're not complaining about the trains. We're complaining about them having to sound horns every five hundred to a thousand feet as they go through town. And I just want to be clear, this is about, you know, noise pollution, quality of life issues. And again, I fully, I fully support us moving forward in trying to get the quiet zone through town for the trains. In reviewing some of the things that I've been bringing to attention, I'd like to bring attention to, I guess it's municipal code fifty dash four oh one. We still have handgun registration permit fee in our municipal code. And at this time, that has been found unconstitutional. So we probably should get rid of that. Which brings up the point, maybe we should go to our boat and find out other things that are, that need to be cleared out. We like adding new rules. But we should be aware of things that have been supplanted or are no longer legal. No matter how you feel about guns, a permit is, I think it's been found unconstitutional essentially. So we shouldn't have it in the municipal code. It's a hanging liability that shouldn't be there. We've been talking about rental registrations, which I know has been indefinitely tabled for the moment. But we were brought up that the fire department already has registrations. And trying to find this registration, I struggled a little bit on the municipal website. You go to fire department and I think it's permits or something, and then you'll find they have a smoke detector registration, which I think is what we're talking about. It's not really a rental registration. It's a smoke detector registration. Where they do ask for phone numbers, names, P O boxes aren't good enough. So again, this goes in with why are we duplicating what we already have? And if the argument is that, well, they don't have everybody, well, that's a different argument. We don't need another rule. We need to use the existing rule more effectively and then share it intergovernmentally. Just as good governance, I would suggest that is the root on that. Since we already are asking for rental registrations through the fire department. And this came up in today's meeting when you were talking about the the grant program, the U E Z. Is how do we communicate these things as a city to the residents? If I was a new landlord in town, I wouldn't know I had to register anything. I buy a property, I advertise for rent, I rent it. I'd be in violation of something I had no awareness of. And communications come up several times in these last couple of meetings. So can we get a community spot on WEFM? Would they give us a subsidized rate for the community so we can advertise? Same thing with the dispatch. I don't know if we have a community corner or something like that, but you can't expect people to follow the law if they're not aware of it. We need to do better, and this has been brought up by several council members, that we need to do better, I guess you call it outreach, to let people know. I'd love it if you'd let everybody know they need to bring their garbage cans in after pickup. That's one of my personal pet peeves, but I don't think we need a law. Just need to let people know. Communication.
Yeah, so Mr. Mellon, can I, can I, as a parliamentarian, could comment? I didn't bring my stopwatch today.
I'm trying to be quick.
And three minutes has been over.
We had five.
Three.
Come on.
It's three, but personal privilege. I just wanted to let you know that you were on a roll and it's all good stuff. And you're on a roll.
I think I got it.
And it's good stuff. So I just, I just want to let everybody who comes after Mr. Mellon. No, I don't have my stopwatch with me, so if somebody does.
Stop fast next.
Okay, if somebody does, they need, they can help me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tommy Kalabik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't wish all the Marines out there a happy birthday. Obviously, November tenth is the anniversary of the founding of the United States Marine Corps and Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans on Saturday, the eleventh, like Gene Simmons sitting over there. They're gonna have a ceremony at the LaPorte Civic at ten thirty in the morning for all the, just members of the public can just show up. I think Jim Arnold's gonna, our state senator and former sheriff is gonna be the keynote speaker. And just go out and attend that or any other veteran ceremony that's going on. I want to congratulate our Michigan City Wolves football team on a good season. They finished six and five. It was a good year for us. We went over and beat LaPorte twice. We beat them on their homecoming night and we went over a few, couple weeks, two weeks ago and beat them on their, on the sectional semifinals. I'm gonna be heading over to Northwood High School in Napanee, Indiana to see my, he's my neighbor, neighbor boy growing up, but he lives in Napanee now. And the Jojo Edman, he's gonna be going to the University of Michigan. They won the sectional last week. Now they're moving on to the regional. I just did that, that's pretty much all I have to say for now. Thanks.
Gabriel Chapl, eighty-three oh three, North four hundred West C N. So the the differences are in the grants. There was one business grant before I was involved with it that was over fifty percent. I reached out to a couple of board members today to see if there was some special circumstance or something that allowed that, and I didn't get an answer on that. So to be transparent, I don't know for that one. Beyond that, that is the residential grants. That program works differently than our business grants do. So our residential grants is up to a hundred percent of the project. We, the maximum amount is five thousand dollars. So if they have a three thousand dollar project, we'll pay in full for it. So it can be over fifty percent for the residential grants. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Good evening, council members. Dakota Uler, seven eighteen Emma Street. At your last regularly scheduled council meeting, I invited you all to the Eastport Neighborhood Association's trunk or treat. I'm happy to announce that we had about a hundred residents that were taking part on that, taking part in that event. I would like to express a thank you to the McDonald's on the Michigan Boulevard for allowing us to be in their parking lot. Also, the businesses that helped donate supplies for that event, which include Reprographic Arts, The Beecher, Captain Ed's, Ricardo's Pizzeria. And I remiss if I missed anybody at this time. I do apologize. Look forward to having future events with Eastport Neighborhood Association and hope at the future events that the council members would be happy to attend.
Brian Gross, eight thirty, West Sixth Street. Received in my water bills, a thinly disguised political advertisement, it looks like to me. It says press release. I'm not sure why I'm getting a press release. I'm not the press. The law was passed quite a while ago. The timing of receiving this is really questionable from the mayor, who's only is the only name on here. And factually, it's not correct. It's telling me I will not, quote, you will not be voting at your traditional primary locations any longer. I'm wondering how many voters actually got confused by that. And the mayor putting this in with the water bills, was there coercion or something? You know, it's, you know, it's just a political advertisement. From what I see, I think if the mayor does that, everybody running for office. running for office should be able, able to put something in the water bill. Maybe there needs to be an ordinance that you cannot do that. Thank you. I don't know if you saw that.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council? Councilman President Blonsky.
Uh, number one, I would like to thank the Michigan City Tree Board. It was in the paper and I read it that they, uh, were able to secure a one million dollar grant, which I know one part of that grant, they're gonna be able to supply five hundred trees for the next three years, uh, for individuals throughout the plant or throughout the city that, uh, won a tree. So that's great news and I appreciate that whole board. That's a volunteer board. They do a lot of great things and go out and get a one million dollar grant. I don't think the tree board's ever had a million dollars sitting in her pocket, uh, to do things. And that, that's fantastic. So, uh, we, we need to applaud that particular board. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to say is, of course, congratulations to Mayor-elect, Councilwoman Deitch. Okay, very good. Great campaign, very nice campaign. And supported you all the way, and I'm proud to say that. And I know that Michigan City and everyone here, and I, I've been saying it since the results came in, that now is the time to not look behind, but now is the time to look forward and get behind the new mayor, get behind a new council, and let's pushing, let's push things forward. Don't sit back and complain. If you have something that you want to see done, bring it to the council meetings and, you know, let's talk about it. Call the mayor's office. I'm sure she'll be glad to talk to you. But, you know, that's how we get things done. So anyway, congratulations and to all the council members that got elected or re-elected, congratulations to you also. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to say with Veterans Day coming up and, you know, Veterans Day is a very special day. And I just, I just want to say as far as veterans, in my particular family, my oldest brother was, is a Vietnam veteran. But in my dad's family, they actually had six, uh, I think it was six or seven. Because they had eleven in the family. So there were six or seven boys in the, uh, in the World War Two all at one time. So, so when you saw the war mothers, remember the war mothers' flags that would hang in the window? Yeah, my, my grandmother had either six or seven stars on that. And, uh, I guess, yeah, that's something to brag about and they all came back home. But what I want to say is, I want to brag on the veterans and what the veterans have done for this nation. And if you can't make a ceremony on Saturday, a Veterans Day ceremony, wherever they're going on, why don't, and if you don't have one, go buy one. And let's put, put your flag out in front of your house and let pe- and celebrate, you know, America, celebrate what these veterans have done for all of us. Because we're all sitting here, not here, in a free republic, doing what we're, we're doing. And the thanks goes to those folks that, that did that. So I just want to bring that up and, uh, yeah, let's go forward. Let's go ahead, Michigan City, and I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I would also like to publicly, again, uh, congratulate all the candidates. Uh, council candidates who won last night. And of course, uh, my elect mayor. Uh, congratulations again. Uh, I'm very proud of her. We, uh, we were campaigning, uh, almost two years. And fa- and finally it paid off. I'm saying that publicly. Uh, also, Veterans Day is kind of dear to my heart, being a Vietnam vet. Uh, I think everyone should take a pause and think about us veterans. Uh, spending a year in Vietnam was not hard. Was, it was my patriotic duty, but, uh, it was not easy, I should say. I said hard. Uh, on another note, uh, the bandstand out there in the park is very dear to me. Uh, being assistant chief on the police department, I helped coordinate security for President uh, Clinton along with Secret Service. Uh, and I like to always pay tribute to that when I go out to the park. Uh, and congratulations, Mr. Hulse, uh, with that piece, uh, by Crane Business News out of Chicago. Uh, I thought it was great. But I'm like you, I don't think we should be compared to New Buffalo. I don't have anything uh, negative to say about New Buffalo, but I think we should, uh, uh, charted our own path. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, uh, good evening. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. Um, congratulations to all the candidates, but congratulations to everybody who stepped up to run for office. It's not an easy thing, but I think our, our, the folks that won kept it really professional and, uh, very civil, and I appreciate that about all the candidates that ran and won. Um, also, I would like to say about the veterans, my husband's in the office, uh, in the audience, not office. In the audience, he did twenty-two and a half years in the army and has a Purple Heart. So he, I want you to thank my husband for his service because also, um, he's supported me and allowed me to, uh, quit my job and, and run for, for office. So I appreciate that. And I'm gonna say that publicly because it has been a two-year journey. Um, so for the veterans, uh, my son is in Air Force, my nephew's in the Navy. Uh, my brother that was here who just got on the road, you know, um, heading back to New Mexico today. Um, he did twenty-one years in, in the army and, uh, spent, they've all did a lot of deployments to Afghanistan and Iraq. In fact, uh, I had their daughter, my, my brother and his wife, uh, were both being deployed. So they li- their daughter lived with us and went went to school with my kids while they were deployed. So we've always been a military family in that regard that, um, families have to step up and the family sacrificed just as much as the, the soldiers do in many cases. So, uh, I, I want everybody to take heed to that. And I appreciate, um, Councilman Don is always that one that is very, he's, he's one of the most patriotic people I know. So I, I like the, uh, flag. Maybe we should give out flags next year. Maybe that's a good thing we should do. Um, and, and I will say that we have a veterans commission that has not been activated. And, uh, we have to do better as a city because last year, I, I was so embarrassed. I was, I was so embarrassed, um. I was just saying, I was embarrassed on Veterans Day and what the city did for Veterans Day and the parade. And, um, I think we should step up and support the organizations. If we're gonna do it, we should do it right. And we should, um, provide, um, breakfast and lunch and everything we could on that day, uh, for our veterans. Because a lot of our homeless population here in Michigan City, um, many of those people are veterans. And it's, um, it's one of those things that we know mental health is, is real and, um, my uncle, my godfather, they're all Vietnam vets, as well as, as, as my, um, my, one of my co-chairs, Gene Simmons and, and Jimmy Arnold. So Saturday at P N W, there is a breakfast. Uh, and Jimmy Arnold is the speaker, but there is a breakfast. I know that's far, uh, a little far out. Um, so we need to figure out and see what kind of breakfasts are gonna be available here locally. And maybe a few of us can get together and do something real quick, um, so that we can provide some, some food here locally. But again, I look forward to everything that is, uh, us moving forward. Um, I also believe that there are gonna be more opportunities for our residents. So, um, I appreciate that and, uh, I just, it's been a good day. And, uh, um, my family's traveling. They're on the highway, so send positive thoughts. Uh, because I have people here from Georgia, Virginia, Georgia, Florida, Texas and New Mexico, and many are on the road as we speak. So, thank you.
Mr. President, I just briefly, I want to, uh, echo the sentiments already expressed. Congratulations to all the winners and our mayor-elect and also happy Veterans Day. Uh, and I also want to emphasize, uh, what, uh, Councilman Presbalski and, uh, Mayor-elect has said about being positive, moving forward with hope and optimism. I think those are the real, the magic ingredients of life. And I think we need to do that because great things are gonna happen in, uh, in our city. And if we all work together, uh, with hope and optimism, I think, uh, those dreams will come true.
Any other comments from the council?
I don't think I have anything else to say, so.
Move for adjournment.
Most to adjourn approved. Have a good evening.